We're going to call the meeting to order of the Board of Supervisors. May I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Giomi.
I'm here, sorry.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Chairwoman Bagwell.
Sharon, will you lead us in the pledge? We're at the opening public comment. If anyone would like to come for public comment. Oh, it's when it's green, okay. Have to learn a new system. Good morning, I'm Sharon Ross with Capital City Arts Initiative. Thank you for letting us do a comment. I want to introduce our new exhibition here, Lay of the Land. And as a treat, I brought the artist with me this morning. So this is Fred Howell, and so if you have any questions for him about his work, a couple of you have already asked. The title cards do have the name of where he took the images. And there will be an exhibition party, reception for the artist, on Friday evening, March 29th. And he will be doing a brief talk during that. So I know you will have had plenty of chance to see them by then, but you're more than welcome. We'd love to have you join us.
I want to say thank you to the Board Supervisors for allowing us to have my art here, and I hope to see you at the reception.
Fred's going to be doing talks about his work at Carson High and at Dayton High School. In the handouts I gave you, I passed out the essay for Sophia Ferguson's exhibition that's in the courthouse. And her show will be up through the end of May. We're thrilled to have her work. She's from Canada. It was, since she was hanging her work starting on February 4th, I was glad we had an artist from Canada and not Florida, since we were getting dumped with snow. She understood. Over at the brick, we have photo finished. It'll just be up through the end of March. If you haven't had a chance to see the show, it's advanced photos by, it's photography by the advanced photo class from Carson High School. And they did some very, very fine work. That's going to be followed by a group show from Carson, Dayton, Douglas, and Pioneer High Schools. And the reception will be April 10th. And we have Nevada neighbors coming up on March 26th. Paul Baker Prindle, who's the curator for UNR's brand-new art museum, The Lily, is going to be giving a virtual tour and talking about building a new art museum. So, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have one. I'm curious as to what kind of camera you use for this, or do you use several?
I use a few different cameras over the years. Currently, I'm using a Nikon D810.
Fred, do you think you would notice if any of them went missing?
Absolutely.
They all are for sale. So, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Do we have any further public comment? Okay, then we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes for February 7th. Does everybody read that? Take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for February 7th, 2019, with a previously submitted typographical correction on page 4.
I need to come closer. Okay, I'm green. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes? Just item?
We're pulling 13A and 13B.
13A and 13B have been withdrawn from the agenda, so if you were here for that, it'll be agendized at a later date. Thank you. Anyone on the board needs? Okay. Then we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there any items? I'd like to pull 9A for discussion. Does any other board member want something else pulled for discussion on consent? No? Anybody in the public need a consent item pulled? Okay, then I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda item with the exception of 9A.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 8A and 9B.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda item with the exception of 9A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Well, now, go, item number 9A is on the bleed control kits. Is that going to be Carol and Jeanie?
Good morning, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. Is it on? It's an adjustment. Yeah, we're just here for the discussion and possible action regarding approval of award of bid number 1819-171 for bleed control kits to North American Rescue to purchase bleed control kits to be placed throughout Carson City, Douglas, Lyon, and Story County for a not-to-exceed amount of $80,400.
Does anyone have a question? Okay, then I'll ask mine. Hi. So, the reason I pulled this one is I just like a little more information. When I looked at the actual bid document, and then I looked at the bids that we received from each of the different vendors, there was a vast difference between a few of those bids. And I was just wanting to make sure that all the bids were based on the same count of kits and the sizes of the cabinets, because it had such a wide range, where it said minimum quantity 30 to 125. That's a huge gap, and I just wanted to make sure those that bid the higher rate weren't supplying us more product, so that I knew we were getting the best cost. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your questions, Supervisor Bagwell. So, when we put out the request at the time when we put the minimum numbers and the maximum numbers that we would be doing, it was because we had not had the opportunity to meet with all four counties to identify the number of total kits that we would be looking for. And we had just had the numbers from the Carson City entities of where we'd be placing those kits. So that's why we put the minimum number into the maximum number of wall-mounted kits, as well as the individual kits that we'd be looking for. The quotes did come in, in a broad span. There were a couple that were really high on that list, and some that were, majority of them were lower and within the same range. In the request for bid that went out nationally, we did put what those minimum requirements were, that we were looking for the wall-mounted kit that would include the case, that would include the foldable stretcher, and a minimum of eight individual units within that wall-mounted case. And that was where I think most of the discrepancy is with the different pricing and the ranges of pricing that was available. When we look at those items, there were questions that were posed by the different people who were interested in putting in the bids. And they did ask if there was a minimum number of kits that they wanted in a wall-mounted kit, or if there was a maximum number. We said that there was a minimum of eight, and that was also quoted in the RFB as well, as to the minimum number of eight. And when we look at those different prices, we do also have verification within their bids as to what the wall-mounted kit total would be, in addition to. And they did give us, when we look at those prices and we break it down, we have verification that there were, they were bidding on the minimum number of kits within that unit, at least for the question on the higher ones, that they were giving us what the cost was on that minimum number. Now whether or not they were willing to break down the prices for a higher number, they did not break that down in their bid accordingly.
Supervisor Giomi.
Hi. I just wanted to ask about the responsibility for managing these once they're up. And I know each county will probably take that responsibility on, but for our purposes, someone, I assume the Health Department will be monitoring this, and then they have to expire, I assume, at some point, like everything in medicine does. And so, can you explain, just briefly, who's going to monitor that to ensure that they're kept stocked, one and two, that they're replaced? And where will the funding come for replacing them? Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Giomi for your question. Nice to meet you too, also, for the first time. As far as these kits, in the collaboration with this project, this was something that we had our law enforcement, our fire and EMS personnel at the table when we were determining how this project would be rolled out. It is a project where we're placing them near or in the same buildings where we have AEDs that are also monitored by the city through our fire EMS partners. They will be also monitoring these kits. These kits are, and the reason for what the contents were that were identified, is because they are items that are not set to expire in short order. Part of the reason why we didn't put something in there, such as a quick clot or a product like that, because they tend to expire within two to three years, and we did not want to have that cost and have the need to reopen them and to be doing that kind of maintenance. So the individual kits and the items that are in there are not something that expires on a rapid basis, or anything of that sort. This is also why we'll be purchasing additional individual kits that we can have in storage, so that if one of these kits was to be broken open and was needed to be used for whatever the incident would be, based on the training, then we would have the ability to replace the individual kits. And so we have that. And that would be something that I will also be continuing to build into my future grants, that for first responder and public safety, for us to be able to put and replace those kits as need be. These are also things that we're getting a few of the kits to also go in our mobile medical facility trailer as well for the city, so that we can make sure that we have this availability.
Thank you there. I appreciate you bringing it forward. They're a great idea. And I know a lot of the act of violence incidents, you know, the deaths are from bleeding. And, you know, we've experienced that here ourselves. So, I appreciate you and the city taking the time to do that.
So, do we have any further questions from the board? Any public comment on this item? Okay, CNN, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the award of the bid as presented.
I have a motion for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to item 11A. John, do you have a disclosure?
I do. Nebraska Statute 28, 281A. Excuse me. Hit this one. It doesn't matter. I'll get them both. Requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My spouse works for the Governor's Office of Economic Development for Rural Counties Community Development Block Grant. The matter before me today is not affected by my relationship and therefore is not a disqualifying conflict of interest. I will participate and vote on this matter.
Thank you for the disclosures. Okay. We're going to discuss an application from Centura Foods for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development. Mr. Haskin?
Good morning. For the record, I'm Andrew Haskin, Director of Business Development for Northern Nevada Development Authority. With me today is Jason Hastings. He's the Director of Science and Manufacturing for Centura Foods. I'm here today to present Centura Foods for the purpose of seeking a letter of acknowledgement for state tax incentives. The company is applying for the sales and use tax abatement, the personal property tax abatement, and the modified business tax abatement. Centura is a federally legal wholesale manufacturer of CBD from industrial hemp. Since 2014, the company has been processing and supplying legal premium CBD oil products. Centura's mandate is to remain the highest-quality source in North America and Europe while improving the well-being of CBD consumers. Every step of Centura's farming, production, packing, and shipping procedures adhere to strict quality standards, as well as the regulatory requirements. The CBD molecule has no psychoactive effects compared to THC, both of which are derived from the cannabis plant. Centura uses industrial hemp, which is cannabis, but must contain no more than 0.3% THC on a dry weight basis. The company exceeds many of the requirements of the Drug Enforcement Agency, Federal Trade Commission, Food and Drug Administration, and U.S. Customs and Border. Centura's quality standards have also led the company to become North America's largest processor and supplier of CBD hemp oil. Centura will be setting up a new manufacturing facility in Carson City, which will serve as their headquarters and first physical location in the United States. Centura will hire approximately 60 employees and an average wage of 31, 35 per hour with benefits. The company also plans to invest approximately an additional $13.2 million in equipment. An NDA fully supports Centura Foods' incentive application and respectfully requests support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings, did you want to add comment, or just wait for questions?
I can wait for questions. He did a good job.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Have you secured a location yet, or are you still looking at multiple states?
We would, we'd like to secure here over off Arrowhead, by the golf course.
Okay. I was just curious why you'd be asking for incentives if you were still looking at multiple locations, but if you've secured a location, then that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. John?
I'm curious, where are your, where is your headquarters now?
Corporate office is located in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Any other questions? Okay. Any public comment on this item? All right, we're moving right along here, okay? A motion?
I move to acknowledge an application from Centura Foods for state incentives through the Governor's Office of Economic Development.
I have a motion in a second to acknowledge the application from Centura Foods. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Welcome to Carson City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, the next item is actually 11B. Did we hear from Assemblyman Kramer?
Yes, he believes he'll be able to be here by 10 o'clock.
So, we'll try to take this one, we'll move along as best we can, and then come back to, excuse me, item 11B. So, we'll go to 12A. KG Walters Construction Contract. Carol, thank you.
Good morning again, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is for discussion and possible action regarding determination that KG Walters Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 to award contract number 1819-167 for Empire Lift Station improvements to KG Walters Construction, Inc. for a total not-to-exceed amount of $227,700.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, CNN, I'll take a motion.
All right, I move to determine that KG Walters Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 to award contract number 1819-167, Empire Lift Station Improvement Project to KG Walters Construction Company for a total not-to-exceed $227,700.
I have a motion in a second to approve the contract with KG Walters. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Carol, did the, okay. All right, there was a correction in the contract on the signature line, so I just wanted to make sure that change got made.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're going to move then to, let's see, 13A and B were withdrawn. So, we're on 14A for the naming of two new parks. I do not see Parks and Rec. I think we can probably just go ahead and, let me get these out, do this item anyway. I happen to sit on that particular committee, so to not hold us up any here. We have two parks. So this is item 14A. We sent out surveys to the community and received responses. It went to the Parks and Rec Commission to review those responses, and they made the recommendation that the Schultz Ranch Areas Park be called Schultz Ranch. And then we had the Disc Golf Course, and we had lots of responses there, and overwhelmingly the selection was Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park. Oh, I was handling it! You guys were, I was just about. So, that's really the recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission, is Schultz Ranch and Disc Golf. But if you want to add anything, you may.
Thank you. Dan Arper Recreation Superintendent for Carson City Parks and Recreation. I mean, I don't really know if there's much to add unless, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer anything about the survey process. But there was one correction. The supervisor, Bonkowski, brought up that on the Disc Golf Course, I had put down 156 votes for the Pony Express Disc Golf Course, and it's actually 126. So that's, the percentage is correct, so it was the number two choice. That's the only correction on the.
Do we have any public comment on this item? We're moving right along. I'll take a motion.
I move to name park facility number one as Schultz Ranch Park, and park facility number two as Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park.
I have a motion in a second to name Schultz Ranch Park and Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. You're fast. Thanks. Okay. I did, I asked for public comment? Okay. Oh, discussion, sorry. Okay, item 15A on the Audit Committee Recommendations.
Good morning, this is Sheri, I'm CFO for the record. So, we're just closing some items the Audit Committee has looked at from recent finding reports that we've done. The first one I was looking at hopefully closing is the Public Guardian. There were four items on this list. Originally, there were eight findings, and so this is the final four of that entire audit project that was done on May 2nd, 2018. I don't know if you want me to go through these in detail, or you can ask questions if you need to. We're just looking at, we have addressed all these, and we're looking at closing the findings.
Does anyone have any questions? So, oh, I want to talk briefly on the one item, just to, just to put that on the record.
I figured, I was just going to do one at a time, and close this one, and then, and then the next one is a little more complex. The DA's office is doing a little bit of research on this one, and so, the meeting, it was, I thought it was clear that we were going to close it, and then the DA was going to report back to the Audit Committee, just with the one little question. But if you want me to keep it open, and then we'll come back when everything is cleared, we can do that too. This one is very complex. I can go into the long explanation if you'd like. It started out as a grant finding. We were supposed to do quotes, and instead, we picked from a list. And so, it was a finding, it was a problem, we looked into it. And in trying to fix this problem, we opened a huge can of worms where the uniform guidance for the grants actually conflicts with the NRS. So there's not a clear answer. So the DA's office is looking into who wins. We think we have resolved most of it, because we are going to follow the grant guidance for the grant funds. However, the way the uniform guidance is written, it requires that we use the same rules for grant funding as we do for all of our other funding. And we truly feel that that is cost prohibitive in this scenario. So if you want me to get more in-depth, I can. The cost prohibitive part, you're looking a little confused.
Let me, let me jump in a little bit on this. So, the dilemma for the Audit Committee is really, I don't think there's any further action the Audit Committee itself can take. So we requested that the DA's office give us a legal opinion, because when we sign grant awards, any federal awards, one of the conditions in there is that we're, we're purchasing the same way for federal grants that we're purchasing for our general fund activities, which we are not, because our state law does not require bids for certain, like, architects on state law are not bid. And so, that's a conflict with how the federal purchasing rules are. And so, we've asked the DA's office to give us the legal opinion on what we need to do to remain in compliance with both state law or federal rules, and that's, and so, the Audit Committee is prepared to close it and just say whatever the District Attorney's Office opinion is, that's what the city should adhere to. And so, the question for us is, should we leave it open until the DA's offices completed their work, or should we close it for the Audit Committee and then just resolve it with the DA's opinion?
Well, if we close it for the Audit Committee, I'd still like to get an update once we get an opinion from the DA's office. So, I'm okay with closing this item, as long as we make a note that we'd like to have an update back here at the Board level.
Okay.
I can do that. Next time I bring stuff to close, I can update you on that, what happened.
And that was going to be my comment, too. And so, it's a federal grant, and there are federal grant guidelines. The reason I'm asking is because I had the same situation. And Dan, I don't know that I got a full-on official opinion, but there might be records over there of an event that's similar that we had in the Fire Department, probably 10 years ago, where we had state law in conflict with the grant guidelines, and we followed the grant guidelines. That was the opinion of the DA's office at the time. I don't know that it was an official opinion, and I don't know that I could find that paperwork, but it might be there somewhere. Just wanted to give you that background.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we are going to follow grant guidelines. That is the plan, that is the procedures that are implemented if we are using architects or surveyors under a grant, and that we're only spending, it has to be over $3,500. So if we're spending $4,000, we will go through the process of getting an SOQ basing the hiring of them on qualifications, and then negotiating a price. That's what NRS requires. I think it's going to be hard to find an architect who's going to want to put together a whole SOQ and go through the whole interview process and all that for $4,000, but that's what the grant requires, so that's what we're going to do. Citywide, we don't plan on doing that.
That's the conflict.
That's the conflict, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion to close.
I move to accept the Audit Committee's recommendation to approve the completed remediation plans and remove the completed findings as presented from the Audit Findings Tracking Summary Report, and direct staff to come back to the board with a... Summary Report, and direct staff to come back to the board with a, uh, an update once we get a legal opinion on the grant finding.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Let's see, I don't see Al yet, so we're gonna move to item 16A, which is a second reading on our ordinance. Nobody's, we're moving so fast, people aren't here. Do you know, do we have any changes between first reading and second reading? No changes?
No.
Oh, here he is. No changes? Or any further public comments received?
You guys are moving really fast. Um, no changes, no, no contact, nothing. Um, it was a really smooth process, so...
Sir, any public comment? I'm, boy, this is just working really well. Okay, number?
2019-4.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to adopt on second reading, ordinance number 2019-4.
Okay, I have a motion for approval on ordinance number 2019-4. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I, I see on 16B, there was a request from the attorney that he wasn't gonna be able to be here till 11:00, but I think we're gonna be long done, Mr. Yu. Is there any reason that we can't take this up and then make a decision to, if we need further information from the attorney?
You know, I, I think that's something that I'm comfortable leaving to the, to the discretion of this board. I mean, it is agendized, there's no specific time called out for this item. If the board's desire is to accommodate that request by the attorney of the business owner, I'm comfortable with that as well. I understand that we're kind of flying through things pretty quickly this morning, so I understand that, you know, efficiency is something that we also have to be mindful of. Um, I don't think that there's any legal stipulation on the record, informally or formally, saying that the city had, had agreed to an 11 o'clock, um, hearing on this matter, so it is agendized properly, and I don't have an issue or a legal concern with a proceeding forward at this moment. But again, I'll leave that at the discretion of the board.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a, well, I'm gonna start first, though, no matter, I, I think we'll go ahead and take some testimony and discussion on this item, and then we can always make a decision to, uh, not take action or wait if necessary, unless the rest of the board feels differently. Everybody okay with moving forward? Disclosure, Greg?
NRS 281A... NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. The business license holder in this matter is married to Jerry Vaccaro, who in the past has filed ethics complaints against me related to my role on this board as a supervisor. The Nevada Ethics Commission has specifically determined, through an official opinion, that where a public officer has been sued in his official capacity, such a circumstance does not create a private relationship between the public officer and the person or entity who sued, so as to require abstention in this situation. In fact, even a disclosure is not required. However, I am making this disclosure in the interest of full transparency. I will be exercising independence of judgment and objectivity in this matter, and because I do not have a disqualifying, disqualifying conflict, I will be voting.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Okay, I don't see Mr. Plamel either, actually. We're, we're going too fast, the staff's not ready.
Do we maybe wanna take a quick, a break?
A recess?
Yeah.
Okay, for 10 minutes? 15 minutes? I'm, I'm getting my, I'm getting a queue over there. Okay, we're in recess till 20 after.
Dean B.
Hope.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. On December 6, 2018, this board had a show cause hearing. At the conclusion of that hearing, you did not take an action. Following that hearing, an agreement was entered into, whereas the business owner agreed that within 90 days, or I believe it was by March 6, they would come into compliance. What does compliance mean? What the municipal code tells you is that in this particular zoning district, you may have 20% of the parcel area may be allocated to outdoor storage. In December, 40% was allocated. This morning, the code enforcement officers inspected the site. They estimate that 35% of the site is now covered with outdoor storage. That would mean we're still in a non-compliance situation by our interpretation. However, it is an improvement since December. My understanding is the business owner is aware that she is out of compliance. Ann Sullivan, the business owner, is present, and I believe she will be asking for an extension. I'll allow her to speak for herself, but the report from the board is we're reporting out to you concerning compliance, and it's our interpretation that they are not in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, did you want to comment?
Morning. Okay. We've had six weeks of bad weather, and I've been unable to get into the backyard to do anything. I need the forklift to move stuff. We had moved some of the stuff in the back, but can't get to the rest of it. That's why I'm asking for an extension. So.
Does any members have a question? Supervisor Giomi.
How long of an extension are you asking for specifically?
30 days. Hopefully, the weather's going to be changing here soon. It looks like it's going to rain for a little while, and then.
You feel that in 30 days, you can get it down to in compliance?
Well, any day that's good in there, that's when we're in the backyard moving stuff. But right now, as I said, I've still got some snow back there. It's muddy. So I've been unable in the whole six weeks to, as I said, we all live here. We all know what the weather's been like. So I'm not trying to just blow smoke here. So just been unable to get into the yard. The front is completely clean. Everything's behind the fence. We've been working on anything that we can do on a good day, and there's not been many of those.
Ann, or Ben, if, or Hope, or Ben, sorry. If, if we don't grant the 30-day extension, what, can you tell me practically what will happen?
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. Pursuant to the agreement, I believe what will happen if the court finds, or excuse me, if the board finds that the business is out of compliance, or the business license would be suspended and revoked.
Okay. Then what happens? Because the stuff is still going to be there. Right? I mean, if we suspend the license, the stuff doesn't magically go away. So what happens in terms of that compliance and our enforcement ability?
I don't think that the agreement had any timelines. I'm not sure. Would have to look and see if there's anything in code regarding businesses that have closed and removing property. I don't know off the top of my head.
Hope, do you have any idea?
They would continue to be in violation. They would be in violation without a business license, so they couldn't lawfully conduct business. And the violation would be a violation of Title 18 as opposed to the title. And if they continued to conduct business, they'd also be in violation of Title 4, and we would continue to pursue code enforcement, likely through the court system.
So we'd be looking at a period of months, likely?
Correct. What's before the board today is we're kind of sitting in Title 4. Okay? And Laurie's, I'm looking at Laurie because we had a couple of years ago, Title 4 versus Title 18. Okay, Title 4 is the business license provisions. So the question is, can this business owner continue to lawfully conduct business in Carson City? Is the answer is yes or no? What we're telling you is the business owner is in violation of Title 18. And what I hear the business owner saying is, give me another 30 days to conduct my business and try to get into compliance with Title 18. I'm telling you right now, they are out of compliance with Title 18, and the decision before the board is to allow them to continue to conduct business lawfully for the next 30 days or not.
Okay.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Hope. If, if the license becomes suspended, the business license is suspended, so they're not able to conduct business with the public, but they would still need to liquidate the inventory. Is wholesaling the inventory out to another business, is that going to be considered conducting business? Because then we have a dilemma, because then we offer them no way to dispose of the inventory.
I believe wholesaling is a business, so it would be conducting business. I believe should you revoke the business license, they would have to seek to reinstate it, or they'd have to sell the business to a different person who could come into compliance. Or we would be looking for them to come into compliance and then consider reinstatement of the business license.
Can I say something?
It's not, they're not trying to keep in compliance since the last day. It does us no good not to be in compliance. But I can't do something physically, you know, with the snow and try and get in there and move things. It's impossible. There's just too much in there that I need equipment for to get in there and move it. And I've been buried in snow and two feet of it for the last six weeks, which could have been compliance if the weather had been good. Now, as I said, it's not just going to affect me not getting my business license. I've got family to take care of. So you're affecting a lot of people.
Thank you.
Maybe I can ask a question. It might be either one of Hope or Ben can answer something. Is there a way that we can give them the 30-days compliance time for the extension that they've requested, but they have to sign an addendum? Because their agreement is already in place, so we'd have to have them amend the agreement. But here's my other caveat potentially in that. So let's say we gave them the 30-day extension to come into compliance. They'd re-sign an agreement today. Can we then add that it's automatically revoked without coming back to this board, but they get a 30-day wind-down provision to sell off the equip? You see where I'm going? That they have 30 days to come into compliance. If they don't, it's revoked 30 days later automatically so that they can wind down their affairs and sell their product.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney, for the record. Yes, in fact, I was going to suggest that if the board does decide to go with allowing more time, we would want to execute an amendment. And I would want the board to, or recommend to the board to stipulate that it be countersigned by the end of today by Ms. Sullivan. And because we are, you know, there's nothing currently in the agreement. It would be an amendment, and so you could add additional terms, provided that they are, you know, agreeable to Ms. Sullivan.
All right. Anyone on, Supervisor Giomi?
I just, I mean, I would just like to say that I'd be willing to go to 45 days. I just, we want it cleaned up. I mean, we want, and you want it cleaned up, right? You're telling us you want it cleaned up.
That backyard serves no use to me.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want us to get into a position where we, where we take their license and then are months down the road in court trying to get it solved. So I would like a commitment from you telling us how much time you need and having you stick to that number. That's what I'd be looking for. Like, now.
Right, right.
And what is the number? What is the number? You said 30 days, but you said you should be able to get it done in 30 days. It's not the same as.
The only thing that worries me is the weather. That's the only thing that bothers me. Okay? I can get in there in a good, when the ground is hard and I can move things, I don't have a problem.
Well, I can't predict that.
Yeah, well, I didn't expect six weeks of snow either.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I'll take you up in your 45 days.
Any other comment from this board?
I think it would be good with the 30 days plus the 30 days that they'd not be allowed to be open to the public, but could still conduct.
Wind down.
Yeah, still be able to sell to other wholesalers or to another liquidator so that we can get the property cleaned off.
Okay. Comments?
Let's see. I'll have to take public comment on this item. Okay. So let me ask Ms. Sullivan.
You sit down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary.
I like it red. Excuse me here.
There is no.
Okay. I'm Jerry Vaccaro, husband to Ann Sullivan. And I'd like Mr. Bonkowski, Supervisor Bonkowski, to clarify in the record our relationship and your reason for wanting to vote on this. First of all, you need to clean up your record to say that I cited you for an ethics violation, and you were found guilty. And your lawyer is here. She made the stipulated settlement for you. Okay? You were found guilty of an ethics complaint. All right? You signed a stipulated settlement agreement. Don't be using that as an excuse for her business. That was on your call. So clarify the record.
Mr. Vaccaro?
Madam Mayor Protem, you know, I'm going to suggest to the board here that you can limit this sort of commentary if you want. I mean, Supervisor Bonkowski has already clearly stated this disclosure on the record. And so this, this sort of comment is inflammatory and is disruptive to the meeting.
And I want to read into the record.
And I recommend that you can shut this commentary down.
Mr. Vaccaro, if you could please have your comments strictly to this agenda item.
This is the agenda. He made the comment, not me.
He's already done his disclosure.
And I'm disclosing the true disclosure, that he was found guilty. Okay?
So, do you have any comments on this item?
I want to read into the record our attorney's, Ms. Sullivan's attorney, John Bartlett. As you know, my client, Capital City Liquidators, has been directed to bring the outside storage inventory in place of the business at 3390 Carson Street into compliance with local ordinance before March 7. Basically, this means reducing the area fenced and screened outside. She's done a good job so far. All of the front is cleared off, okay? She couldn't get to the backyard because it's an unpaved piece of property. Could not get in there with her forklift to remove that product. So what he's asking for here in his legal authority was to ask for the continuation to April 5 for the 30-day extension. If you want to grant an extra 15 days to get assurance that that would be done, you can have your code enforcement come back anytime we call before that time and let them re-inspect and re-photograph. So it's weather permitting. And as long as it's in compliance, her license is not in violation. So there will be compliance prior to that date. And I would ask your consideration at this point to let her complete that and let her, the business is for sale, so she's trying to retire. And the compliance has to be done before a sale can be completed. All right? So take all of those things into consideration. And hopefully, Mr. Bonkowski can clean up his act and stop his ethics violations. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, I'll come back to discussion at this level.
Thank you, if I may. Mayor Protem, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. Just for the benefit of the record, I'd like to put on the record that per the terms of Title 18, the applicant can seek a special use permit to come in, to exceed the 20% of outdoor storage. So we were talking about Title 4 versus Title 18, and what's in front of you right now is a potential revocation of a business license, which would be part of Title 4. But the reason for that would be because of a violation in Title 18. So I just want to put on the record that there is the opportunity to exceed the 20% if the applicant were able to obtain a special use permit. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan, just for a little clarity here too, would you tell us how long? Just because I don't think the public that might be listening today, how long have they been not in compliance? And we've been working on this issue? So it's not the last 30 days, just to put on the record. Thank you.
There's been an active code violation case on this property since November 2015.
So three and a half years. Okay. I just wanted to put that on the record. So let me ask Ms. Sullivan. Are you willing to accept a 30-day extension and then a 30-day agreement to wind down if you do not come into compliance? You're willing to sign that today?
Yeah.
She's on.
Okay.
I just want to know before this board takes any action that you're willing to sign.
When you mean wind down, you mean get rid of the business completely?
Or sell off your product or whatever. You'd have 30 more days to wind it down because your license would go into revocation. If you don't come into compliance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I'd like that on the record. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
And hopefully, we'll have good weather.
Yeah, that too. Any pleasure?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll try. I move to direct the District Attorney's Office to draft an amendment to the agreement between Ann Sullivan, owner of Capital City Liquidators, and Carson City for the purposes of resolving the issues of repeated violations of outside storage requirements by granting the business 30 days to come into compliance. And if after 30 days they are not in compliance, the license will be revoked pending an additional 30 days to liquidate assets.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just, I want to clarify. Jerry said weather-dependent, and that 30 days is not weather-dependent.
That's me say that.
30 days, well, he also said it. It's 30 days, not weather-dependent.
To be in compliance.
To be in compliance.
This is dead, then. Your complaint is dead if it's in compliance.
Yeah. That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
It'll be in compliance.
In the agreement.
Thank you.
You have to be in compliance. And did the agreement originally have, and they had to remain in compliance for so long afterwards? You know, they, right.
Yeah.
Right, I think we had 180 days.
That's no good at all.
I would amend my motion that that 180-day provision needs to remain in the agreement.
Right.
Along with other.
The existing stuff.
Yeah, existing language.
And you're agree. All those in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry. Sorry, just to clarify, this, this motion would not mandate a return of this item to this board. The staff would make an interpretation of whether or not there was compliance. If we determine compliance, the business stays in business. If we determine non-compliance, the business license is revoked, and the board takes no further action. Just confirming.
That's the intention of my motion, yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor, oh, more, further discussion? We're moving right on.
Further clarity, so just based on what you just said. So at the end of 30 days, staff will make a determination of whether there's compliance or not. The, if, if there's not compliance, then the business license is revoked. So they're not able to be open to the public, but they would still have 30 days to clear off the property one way or another. Is that?
That's my motion.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All those in, oh, sorry, more discussion?
Question, yes. I have a question for Hope. You have informed us that they've been out of compliance since November of 2015. Were there percentages that attached to that at that time? How much out of compliance?
I'm not familiar with the details of the initial code enforcement case. What I can speak to is just between December 2018 and current time. They've gone from 40% coverage to 35% coverage, roughly. I'm afraid I don't have that information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, one more time. Anybody have any more? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have three ayes and one no. The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we're going to move on to, I don't see Al, so we'll move to item 17A, Ms. Akers. This item is to discuss a plan on how to use some indigent tax refunds.
Good morning. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. First, I'm going to have Mary Jane Ostrander just give a brief history of the indigent tax, and then we will go into the plan.
Good morning. Mary Jane Ostrander, Human Services Manager. So the history of the indigent tax and where this reimbursement came from is between the year 2011, 2014, there was many different changes made to the medical indigent fund and the tax revenue from that fund. With the Affordable Care Act coming into play, our medical responsibilities were decreased. Prior to that, we were responsible for emergency medical, you know, somebody ended up in the hospital or something, didn't have insurance, was deemed to be indigent. We used some of this tax money to assist or emergency prescriptions, things like that. So with the Affordable Care Act, insurance became mandated. Therefore, it was a prior resource to our assistance. So that decreased a lot of our medical costs. And then also during that time, the legislature dropped the term Medical Indigent Fund, and it's now known as the Indigent Tax Fund. And that allowed some of our counties to start programming for indigent, our indigent residents, other than medical related. For example, Washoe County, a lot of their money was focused on the hot clinics. They had medical clinics for people without insurance and things like that. They were able to close those and put their funding toward crossroads or other programming for, to address other indigent needs. So, and then also during this time, the Indigent Tax Fund was redeveloped and, you know, with the acknowledgement that the counties wouldn't be needing that or be utilizing that as much. However, as the IAF was getting federalized, it was agreed that there would be a pot of money set aside for the counties because there's a lot of unknowns to that too. You know, at that time, the Affordable Care Act, yeah, we don't know how that's going to roll out and look. So there was $2 million from that fund that was set aside for the counties to apply for when they were unable to meet their long-term care costs. Carson City has traditionally always capped their long-term care costs, so we never, we didn't have that ability to do something else with that tax fund. All of our tax revenue was spent on long-term care costs, and that's also a county match, a Medicaid county match program. Because also during that time, they also pushed down more expenses to the county, if you recall. So, so each year, we've been able to apply to that fund that was set aside for the difference that was there when we couldn't meet all of our long-term care obligations. Our tax revenue was lower than the expenses. So we were able to apply each year for that difference. We were in, we were maybe one of three counties that always met that cap and was able to reapply for it. So there is a pot of money there that wasn't getting dispersed back to the counties. So the IAF Board re-looked at that. They redid the application, and we were able to reapply for the fiscal year 1617. And as a result, the, there was only five counties that applied for that, and therefore, when they did the awards, they were able to give each of those five counties 84% back on what they paid in long-term care. And so for Carson City, our long-term care costs that year were $992,965. So we received as a refund $834,90. And so that's where this refund reimbursement, we're actually going to be seeing it as a credit. So I just want to point that out. We don't have a check. So, and I just got word at 9:14 this morning, as I'm sitting back there, that we may end up not seeing that credit till June or July. At this point, we were going to see it in February, but that's the latest. So currently, the sustainability is unknown. I have a feeling more counties will apply next time it opens up.
Of course they will. Yeah, of course they will.
Yeah, and so, so we may not get as much. In fact, I can say we're not going to get as much as we did this this particular year. And then, and the, as the NACO IAF Board did this, they were very strong in directing that this money stay with the indigent population, and the counties look at programs that we have been unable to implement due to funding. So that was kind of the caveat that they put on the funds. We have taken it to the IFC Committee, sorry, and they did approve our strategic plan and the direction we're going with it in February. It was agreed upon that any future expenses under $5,000 could be added to this plan without IFC approval, and all expenditures exceeding $5,000 will go back to the IFC and possibly the board as well. So with that, and I just want to acknowledge, we have a lot of collaborative partners in the audience today, and I really appreciate them being here and working with me on preparing the best plan for this funding as we could. One of the things that I looked at is the county responsibilities under NRS 428, where the county is required to provide care, support, and relief to the poor, indigent, incompetent, and those incapacitated by age, disease, and accident. Looking at some of our assessments that we have done, and we'll go into more details with those, and knowledge of the housing crisis we're in, and identifying what population is falling through the cracks that we're unable to help. We have HUD grants to help rehouse people. We have HUD grants to prevent evictions, but with those HUD grants were really restricted. So we had a population that was definitely falling through the cracks, and so that's where we reached out to the courts and things.
And again, for the record, Nikki Aker, I just want to highlight, as Mary Jane said, this is a plan of programs with human services and our city department partners. We kept it within the city instead of expanding it out to other partners. This, again, is for indigent services, and we have to be very careful of that because we will be responsible for reporting back to NACO on our future applications. And NACO is amendable to allowing us to use this refund over two to three years, as long as we can show that that funding is earmarked for the types of projects that we'll be discussing today. And internally, we have talked with finance, and an account will be created under the same, it's a 208 category, to keep track of these funds. This is a, as Mary Jane pointed out, it is a budgeted item already. It's our county match, and that money will go as a refund into that. And I think we're ready to get into the meat of the plan, and we're going to go ahead and start with the housing since we've got two judges here to talk about it, and they want to get back to work. So.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. My name is Tom Armstrong, and I am Justice of the Peace, Justice Court Judge here in Carson City, and I appreciate your hearing from me this morning. Our first thing I want to say is I want to thank Nikki and Mary Jane on putting this together and for thinking of the courts as a partner in this proposal. It's been, I cannot, I can't tell you how important this transitional housing program will be for our specialty court programs in particular. It is the biggest glaring weakness that we have in our programs. I'm very proud of the programs, all of our programs, and I'm very proud of the misdemeanor treatment program, which is the one I preside over. And in fact, this is so important to me that I am missing misdemeanor court today. In fact, I'm missing a graduation for one of my misdemeanor court participants because in the big picture, this is something that we need to address in one form. And then the plan here, I think, that has been put together is, I mean, when does something like this happen? When do all of a sudden $900,000, you know, just show up, right? I mean, it just, never heard of such a thing. I've been working on this, some version of this type of program since I started the court, identified a need in my courts, which was the impetus for me to starting the program. I started working the program, then the idea for transitional sober living became apparent. If somebody does not have safe, and we all need safe and stable housing, right? We all need that. People in recovery, people who have a substance abuse disorder, need safe, stable, and sober housing. And as you might imagine, especially for our populations of the court that are criminal justice implicated, that's not common. It's not, it's not easy to find safe and stable housing for a lot of people in Carson City without those issues. With those issues is very challenging. So when we screen somebody for the program, you know, lots of times they're going from jail out to counseling, and then we say, you know, lots of times they can't go home because number one, either home is not sober, or if home is sober, if mom and dad or family friend can take them, it's so, lots of times, they want to wait and see, right? Their bridge is oftentimes burned, rightfully, you know, and they want to wait and see, make sure this is going to stick this time before they stick their neck out and have someone live with them, right? So we're looking at a place to transition and transition from criminal justice involvement into recovery. Lots of times that's right into outpatient treatment, which is, in our programs, is significant, is intensive, literally intensive outpatient treatment or residential treatment. And then the plan is always, where do we go from there? We hope for the best. You know, FISH has some openings, but there's a lot of preclusions, criminal justice history precludes people from using that program. I have one gentleman, in fact, I let out of jail. I don't want him, I want him in treatment. I want him out of jail because he's going to do the program. He said he could stay with his, he says, girl. We checked that out. That wasn't a sober, that wasn't a good place for him to go. Right now, he's in the warming shelters, and we're waiting to get him into some kind of sober living arrangement right now. And the longer we take to do that, the less likely his chances of success are, right? And that's the need. It is the single most glaring weakness that we have is this, and I emphasize, in my courts, it's the word transitional. We're not looking for permanent placements. We're looking for someone to spend three months during the hardest phases of their treatment court program to have safe, stable, sober, accountable living so we can, and the goal is to transition them into eventually full-time employment, if it transition them into housing that is not transitional, not supervised, but independent and productive, and eventually their own place and paying their own rent, you know, hopefully buying their own home someday, right? That's what, that's the goal is. We don't need, I'm not asking here for a long-term placement, and we have a great partnership, and we have for a long time now with the city, using, utilizing the other housing programs in Carson City. But this is a critical bridge from where our people are when they start to get to that point, and I'm in support of it. The final thing I want to say is the drug testing is an important piece of this as well, especially for the specialty court program piece. It's best practices. Programming without this kind of accountability supervision is just setting, you're not going to change behaviors without working this part in. It doesn't, it's not free. We spend tons of money on supplies and treatment and, you know, manpower going out there and doing the testing, but we wouldn't do it if it wasn't necessary. I dream one day of having some version of the crossroads program here in Carson City. I've met with the Salvation Army, and I've met with community council center. We've looked at properties, we've talked to property owners, and if we have the money, we don't have the inventory, we don't have the place to put them, if we don't have, you know, if we have a place that's willing to open up, but we don't have any money for funding, then there we are. We have an opportunity here, and I just think we'd be remiss if we did not jump on it. So I'm open to any questions you have regarding the courts piece. I want to stay in my lane. I'm just talking about the courts and the transitional living. The rest is, other people can talk about that, and they're knowledgeable, but I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the judge on the housing program? Supervisor Bonkowski?
So going through the goals, strategies, outcomes, to me, I look at this, and the weak link appears to be that on every one of these, it says, "Housing will be primarily with property managers willing to charge a set amount of rent and will work with the specialty courts for three to six months." How many units is that, that you have available or anticipate will become available? Because with vacancy rates at less than 1% here, I don't understand why landlords would participate. You want to take it? You want me to take it?
Go ahead.
We have a provider in town that we've been talking to that will be able to do this for us. It's called Life Recovery. They had a men's house, a women's house. The women's house is on the verge of shutting down. The men's house has availability. We currently contract with them as it stands, and it is sober living. It's designed for sober living. We've talked to, you know, some property owners in town, some weeklys, that sort of thing, and tried to work something out, and for some people, that's a valid placement. For people in recovery, unless the entire premises is sober, it's not a valid placement, at least not initially. And so you're right, it's, that's been one of our biggest challenges, is it, but we have some, we have, we're working right now, building a private partnership with a provider for sober living. We laid out the plan, we told them what we expect, what we expect from them, to be accountable to us, to make sure that they're doing the things they need to be doing. And we've worked with them so far, and I think there's room for improvement in that relationship, and that there's some things that we can do better, some things that they can do better, but this is the first step toward getting it where we need to be. And our expectations for them are clear. They know what we need, and they're willing to provide it.
Maybe I can add something. If you recall Supervisor Bonkowski, we did a code change, I don't know, six, eight months ago, that dealt with a new state law that dealt with the sober living. So they are renting a house that might have four bedrooms, so that would be eight people at the $650. So it's very amenable pricing for a landlord because they're not renting it at $675 for the whole house. It's per participant in the home. So those rents are decent when put together for the, because it's a whole sober living home, right? So you have eight or 10 participants in the home.
Right.
At $650 each.
And right now, I don't mean to interrupt, but right now, we have, we have a men's house. The women's house was, is on the verge of being shuttered, but they're extending that, keeping it open in hopes that if you are willing to pass this today, that we can start placing, and, you know, the jail population for women and all of that's a whole, we could talk, I could talk for hours about that and what's happening there, but the bottom line is that we have a provider. We have a provider willing to step up, and it's more than we've had, all three pieces in place than we've ever had since I started being a judge here.
So the, how many units, available units are there with this provider? And is the $97,000 ask based on paying for? And is the $97,000 ask based on paying for full capacity for the, under that provider's available units?
I'll let her talk about the numbers.
I'm trying to make a connection between what you're asking for money-wise and the number of beds or rooms that are available to make sure that those match. Or are you looking at that provider plus wanting some additional so that if you do find other units, that you would be able to move forward with those as well?
When we put that budget together, we put together what the needs are. What each, as you can see, it's broken down between each court and about an estimation of what they see in their courts that are homeless or would need a place to stay. So it is, we needed to set a budget and that's what we based that on. We based it on three months of each person. Now, the reality is, we don't have 50 spots to put the people in. And there may be some where that three months is not going to make a difference. And they may need six months. So we're going to have to individualize those clients and those cases. We're going to start out with approvals for three months, but with the ability to extend it. This will be in our policies and procedures. Human Services is also going to be actively involved. And the piece that we're going to be involved in is rolling that person over into permanent housing. You know, keeping, as we're doing already with a lot of these folks, looking for apartment, permanent apartment rentals for them. And as we're able to do that, if we're able to locate a unit that is permanent, we'll be able to roll them into one of our HUD programs as well. We've been restricted to this population in group living. HUD will not allow us to assist a person with group living. That's the gap that we've had. We have some HUD money. We wanted to help the courts, but the barrier was the HUD regulations. And so this is allowing us to do a transition. They can still be considered homeless in our HUD grants because somebody else is paying their rent and then be able to roll them over as units become available. Yes, it is difficult, but it's difficult today too for us. You know, we're giving back HUD money because we can't find places to put people. That's going to continue to be a barrier, but we're positive.
Yeah, just so I, fundamental understanding on the money. The 834-090 is pledged to us now and we have the full amount now, correct? We do not. Well, June, July, and I get it, it's not real money, it's a refund, but a credit.
Yeah, it's supposed to show up as a credit on our county match invoices. So instead of putting, and we're putting 100, our monthly payments are about $100,000 to $140,000 a month. So instead of paying that county match, we'll be able to use those funds elsewhere.
Starting in June or July?
Yeah. Possibly, yeah. But just, I have to find out more about that. Like I said, that email just came through about 9:15. Up until then, we were supposed to see it on our next invoice.
So what I'm asking, whether it's you or Finance or Nancy, the, we have a pledge of the money. I mean, the money, there's not a chance the money's not going to show up? That's my question. If we approve this and go down the road and the money doesn't show up? Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
Well, and when we were putting together this plan, we had to look at it as, where we had to look at the sustainability. It's not, you know, there's no guarantee that we're going to have that. So what can we do now that we have it that we can either spend the next two years looking for other funding to support that or it might just have to go away? There is a risk of that. And I was going to go through more detail on that, but in our personnel, you'll see that we did a lot of contracts instead of employee positions.
I saw that. So essentially, we're talking about a pay-as-you-go.
Let's try and stick to the courts for now.
Sort of a pay-as-you-go environment with this. And the court component of that fits into that because you can house somebody for three months, pay for that, and then if the funding goes away, you've, you know, that part's succeeded.
Right, our, my expectation is this to be a rotating type of bed. So I set them for beds and we rotate people in as they need them and rotate them out as they no longer need them. That amount of time will be different for different people. And this is for people who can't afford it themselves, right? This is for people who need it, not just for everybody. What I, my hope is that, that as the funding changes, we'll have a demonstrable working program that we can point to for grant opportunities, for other funding opportunities, maybe a nonprofit partnership. I mean, if we show that we can do it and it works and we have a opportunity to do that now, it's a much easier sell than selling an abstract program that we haven't, that we haven't even started yet. And I have visions of in the future of laying another programming with these types of transitional housing. I, you know, I need to stay in my lane as a judge, but I have some pretty big ideas for how this could look eventually. But this is the first rung of the ladder. And my hope is, we make it work, we show that it works, we can show that to anybody who's interested. And I think we could, we have a better chance at least of continuing the program in the absence of this funding in the future.
So for finance purposes, this is part of a property tax rate we collect. And then the vast majority of that is the county match that goes back to the state. So they've said they're going to give us a credit of this $800,000, so we won't pay it. When they send that bill, there'll be a credit on there. So until we see that money, I don't think anybody's interested in spending it until we know exactly when it's coming in. We're just asking if, when we do get that money, is this a good plan?
I mean, just as an aside, if it's a credit, why can't they start it now? If it's a credit and they said they're going to do it?
I don't know. The email this morning that they're referring to said something about one more approval process or something. It's through NACO in the state. So there's probably one more hoop they have to jump through. But I think until this money comes in and we know it's for sure ours, I don't think anybody plans on spending anything.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, we don't have any reason to believe that this is not going to go through. So I'll just comment that we've been working in the Housing Task Force for quite a while and I think this program is super exciting. I think it, I think it's going to benefit more than just the recipient. And I like programs that I think benefit the community as a whole, not just the recipient. I think it's going to help the jail. I think it's going, I just think it's going to help the families of all of these people that, like you said, there's a chance, there's a hope, there's something for them to grab on to, to make a change. So I'm super excited about this program.
I would like to say that, point out that the recovery of the participant and the benefits to that particular person is just the tip of the iceberg. There's children being reunited with their parents. There's families, you know, parents being reunited with their, you know, their children, their grandchildren. There's people, you know, in the workforce. There's, and not to mention the negative, right? Removing them from the criminal justice system and the court system and off of, you know, public assistance, that sort of thing. I mean, the impact of one success story, of this one graduate I have today, trickles down far beyond what you can see for that one particular person. And the more I've done this job, the more obvious that is. And I see it when I have one person coming in and every day they're telling me that they want a travel pass to spend, you know, Tuesdays and Wednesday nights with their mother so they can spend the nights with their children who are teenagers who haven't had a mom around because she's been an addict for the last eight years, right? Not only does it benefit her and those kids, but what about the impact of reuniting that bond when those teenagers start having their own children, right? It's kind of mind-boggling to think about it, how much one success story means for the community at large.
I didn't know if Judge Lewis wanted to make a comment. She's been here all morning too, just in case.
I just want to add also that what that email said is that it just needs to be put into the State Planning Medicaid program is the other additional approval. And I'm, you know, I stay confident that that's not, that money that's set aside is for the counties. It's the county's money and that's how it was set aside. So I really anticipate that it will go smoothly.
I'm going to yield to my esteemed colleague, Judge Lewis. Thank you all for listening to me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Judge Lewis?
Okay. Good morning. I just wanted to echo a few additional comments that were made here in terms of the bigger picture. I'm dealing with the mental health court. So obviously, we have people who are dealing with some of the same substance abuse issues that Judge Armstrong was just talking about. But more importantly, they have a significant mental health issue that can be debilitating for them. And so the biggest part, you know, especially early in a program, some of our people are in residential treatment. If they're not, they're in intensive outpatient treatment. And that consists of going to groups at least three times per week, three hours at a time. So that's a pretty heavy responsibility along with other counseling groups that they're participating in. So that usually lasts for 90 days. When we're looking at this housing piece and trying to get people through that part of it, we try to get them to the stage where they can get employment and start taking steps on their own to pass the GED or to do some of the other things that they haven't done once that 90 days is passed. And so that's why the time period that we're looking at is so important. And when you're dealing with the mental health side of it too, getting people stabilized in treatment and stabilized on medications is a big piece. I'm not dealing with anybody who's graduating the program right now. I think Judge Tatro handled the last graduations before he retired. But I do have at least a couple of people in our program who are looking to graduate towards the summer. One of them had criminal charges. One of them had significant mental health issues, had had children removed. She's now working full-time, a full-time job at Olive Garden. She's paying for her own housing. She's gotten off of public assistance and she's looking at reunifying with her children. Those are the pictures that we want to see. Those are the things that we want to try and do. And when we're able to take that step, then all of the assistance that was previously provided to her can go to somebody else and we can try and continue with these success stories. Is everybody going to reach that mark? Not necessarily. But a lot of our people also have social security disability. We just need to get that in place, get them in some permanent housing, and we can take care of those issues. But this is a huge piece and we need to be able to have something that we can move forward with.
Any questions for Judge Lewis? Thank you so much for coming and helping us make these decisions. Thank you. Okay. Mary Jane, you want to go back into some of the other components then?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of start going through the needs and what we're proposing in more detail.
Mary Jane, before we go through any more of the other programs, the credited funds, will they be allowed to roll over or will they expire at the end of this year? Because as we're going through this, if they're going to expire at the end of this year, then we need to be looking at this programming from the perspective of maximizing as much of the funding as possible before we have to give it back.
Yes. We have asked that and we can roll it over from year to year as long as we have it earmarked for the specific reason or the specific programming. So the way that we have it figured is we'd be able to sustain this for about three years. And that's without any additional reimbursements we may get. Personally, I don't want to count on that until we see it again. But the way we, the plan that we have and the budget that we're looking at, we'll be able to sustain this for almost a full three years.
So because it doesn't state that in the strategic plan, then we would want to include that in our motion when we make it?
Yeah, I would, I would say that when they give us the credit, then accounting will move the credit to the specific line item, which will give us that amount. And so then we would expense those according to a plan and put in the motion that that's a one-time or that's a three-year so that it will be properly obligated so that they can then take it back.
But equally, and that's important too, but I'd also like to make sure we put in the motion that we're expending the funds as the funds become available and not just implementing the plans absent the funds.
Thank you. So we're thinking three years for the judges.
What's that?
We're thinking three years for the housing program.
Yeah, thanks. So the particular housing program, we wanted to name it. We wanted to give it a name because we really want it specific. You know, we're not, we can't, because normally we don't pay motel rooms. You know, we don't encourage long-term motel stays. So that's one of the reasons I wanted it specific and a name. So you're enrolled in the CC Shares Program, which is Carson City Sober Housing Assistance Reinforces Everyone's Safety Program. And so you can see that we have that spelled out here. We will be having policies, we're going to be writing up some policies and procedures that will probably mirror a lot of our HUD grants with some exceptions. And Human Services is going to control that eligibility. Even though the courts can put them in, we're going to have to give that final okay that they meet the definition of indigent and that they're resident of Carson City specifically. We're going to be doing individualized case plans. We're developing our database to be able to include some specific performance measures so that we could show, is this a success? Is it not a success? We may abolish it in a year, you know, and then come back to you with a now what, you know? But it's really important for me to really zero down on those performance measures and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
So, and if I can just add, so you can see we've branded it, CC Shares. And this, the transitional housing, it fits very nicely into our Community Health Improvement Plan under Behavioral Health. And we do have a subcommittee under there, Transitional Housing. And it also fits into some other of those initiatives under Behavioral Health also.
To move back on our first need there is the Human Services General Assistance Supplemental Program. We already provide some general assistance. It's very minimal. We, by our standards and guidelines, we can only expend $275 to an individual that may be looking at eviction. And then for our HUD grants that prevent evictions, there's a lot of guidelines there. It has to meet the fair market rent. They have to have a certain income level, which this also does. But there's a lot of things that fall through the cracks or a lot of people that fall through the cracks. Maybe they are in a long-term motel stay. I can't help that, you know, according to our guidelines right now. So we're asking for some, you know, minimal amount of money to be set aside for Human Services to be able to fill the gaps when we see them. You know, it could be space rent on a mobile home. We don't do that now because of our regulations and stuff. So that's just kind of what I'm looking for. It's just something that we can fall back on.
And then the next one, can you tell me, does that fall within our chip and where that falls to? Do we have a component that that falls into? That can also fall into our Behavioral Health and under housing, you know, because we're able with a little bit of funding that doesn't have all the regulations tied to it, then we could get somebody housed in.
And yeah, and just to add to that and to prevent that eviction, to keep them in safe housing and prevent the homelessness, which is in our strategic goals for our division as well. So to tie this into that transitional housing, I looked at what we need personnel-wise. We're very light in our personnel. Currently, I only have one half of a case manager that falls under general fund. The other half of that case manager is grant-funded. And she's funded through our Emergency Solutions Grant, which is rehousing and prevention. And we've been doing okay with that. However, with the lack of units to be able to rehouse people- people in, I need to ensure that 50% of what she's doing every day is tied to that grant. It's getting more and more difficult to do that. And she has also been working in Judge Armstrong's court and also doing a lot of our general fund responsibilities. So I'm proposing that we can use some of that funding to keep her funded and us being able to only bill that ESG grant for what she's actually doing. And I'm asking for the other 50% of her salary to be dedicated to those responsibilities. We will keep it separate. You know, should these funds go away, then it becomes grant-funded again. If I can't keep it fully grant-funded through the Emergency Solutions Grant, I can look at our Community Services Block Grant and, and that'll help us keep the one full-time case manager. The other case manager that we have is 100% funded through our Community Services Block Grant, so that, that stays.
And so for clarification on the document that's in front of you, it says 100% general-funded. To clarify it even further, it will be 50% general-funded and 50% paid from the indigent tax refund money. And then all of these primary needs as far as personnel that Mary Jane is talking about, they fulfill the Human Services Division's strategic goals and also the requirement under NRS 428 that Mary Jane spoke about earlier. So I'll let you...
Do we have any questions on the personnel component?
Do you want us to go through each one? Are you good?
Nope. Let's, let's move on. And let's see, we talked about that the drug testing was hooked to the housing project. So I think if you want to move to our packets, 288 on your one-time, you're, we're all caught up.
I, I do want to just mention one of the other personnel that I think is critical is we're going to ask for a full-time community health worker just to work with the specialty courts fast and most, you know, dedicated to just that, to help those people succeed.
And I got to add one thing too. For the community health worker, you all through Board of Health and it was before your time Supervisor Giomi, but we brought a quality improvement project forward that utilizes a community health worker in our housing program. And that's not your typical utilization of a community health worker, but we've been able to show successes with having that community health worker within a housing program.
Senator Bonkowski?
On, on both the personnel and the housing, if we are contemplating allocating funding for a three-year period, then there are going to be increases in years two and three. I'm wondering if 5% annually on the personnel and 3% annually on the housing and drug testing would be appropriate to cover increases, salaries and benefits on the, on the personnel side for the final two years and, and potential increases in the cost of drug testing or whatever else may come up on the housing side?
I think with a lot of unknowns involved, we have to kind of stay static. Those increases may be able to be addressed as our second year and we're able to reapply in seeing what kind of funding that we're going to be receiving. Again, only five of the 15 counties that are eligible applied. And so it's going to be interesting. We might get 84% back now. We might only get 5%.
Right. But I thought that you said that it has to be allocated initially or it can't be rolled over. So we would lose it. So what I'm trying to do is keep a running total of the three-year allocation. And if we, if we start with the personnel amount and then we increase that by 5% in year two and 5% in year three, then that gives us $419,000 and 100, or $419,188. And then on the housing and drug testing side, if we do 3% increases in year two and three, then we're at 325, 652. So I'm just trying to keep a running total. What I'm asking is, do you believe that the 3% and the 5% increases would cover any additional costs that may come up in the programming?
We'll bring Ted.
I'm going to ask Ted to address the cost of drug testing and see if that 3% is adequate. I think under housing, it may be, but I don't know the drug testing.
Yeah. And keeping in mind that if there's not an increase in the housing cost, in other words, that's set by, like it's at the 675 now. If that doesn't go up, then that additional 3% that we've allocated for the housing can be rolled over to the drug testing.
And I appreciate you thinking about that.
That'd be almost another $4,000.
If I'm adding this, yeah. I mean, if I, if I added it correctly, the three-year plan totals just under the amount of money that we're scheduled to get. And so you're saying the changes that you're making would... Well, that's true. Right. Okay.
With the drug testing, we have our one contract with Thermo Fisher. So our costs are roughly what you're seeing there. And it does fluctuate. We're getting ready to test for a few different drugs, which is going to bring it up a little bit, but it's not going to be over and over. So we're looking at ways to manage, but that 3% would, it would cover. I mean, right now it's written up so we can go in once a month. We'll do drug testing. But there are times as the program grows, we might see a need to go in twice a month. And so...
How about the idea Supervisor Bonkowski, that I'd really like to tie those two as the program because I think there, you need one and the other to make it successful. So could we just give a 5% increase to that program, which is the, the housing and the drug testing, that that's a component instead of them each individually? Then that way they can use the money whichever, so if they can get two more beds or test twice, it wouldn't matter. We would let that design work efficiently for the program. So we'd, I'd like to link those two unless someone thinks they shouldn't be linked and that they work that in concert.
That was actually my intent because they're broken down into personnel, transitional housing.
But let's put them, let's put those two together. Is that a good idea?
So the money can be moved back and forth between the items that are under that portion.
I like that idea. Okay.
Yeah. The transitional housing component, the drug testing.
General Assistance Supplemental, sober housing.
Do you want the general assistance in that? Because that one's the gap that's outside of the court program. The court program is only the drug testing and that housing versus the 6,000 that you wanted for the gap for the non-HUD eligible. You want to put all three in that or just?
No, I think that we could keep the general assistance.
Out.
Yeah, out.
Right.
That's going to be kind of just like any of our other grants. Either we have it or we don't.
I don't see that being a piece of that component.
And when it comes down to it, if you don't spend the money, then it's going to go away.
We find another way to use it.
Yeah, we find another avenue to use it on indigent individuals.
I think, I think somewhere in this plan, we need to put, you know, a contingency that if funds aren't spent and become available, that they're used for something that we know we're going to have a cost in so that the funds don't, so that it's clear to everyone that the funds are fully allocated. Do you understand? I mean, does that make sense? So whether that be ambulance indigent fund or whatever it may be, if at the end of the year, they say you haven't spent all your funds.
We have to be very careful not to supplant funds. So this is for, right?
Yeah.
So that brings up an additional question that I had, which is if we're using the 1617 money to go out for three years of programming and we apply for the 1718 timeframe and 1819 timeframe and get more funds, you have other programs that you can roll that into? Because we've already paid for three years of these programs. So I want to make sure that we're thinking ahead too and that we have other programs available that we can allocate funds for in, in future years if we get it.
Yeah, we might be able to look at expanding what we have here and, and/or other programming, you know, look at, I know Human Services is getting ready to do another community needs assessment and look at what those needs are and what our obligations are. And then just again, you know, reach out to our community and, and our partners and everything, you know, what do we need?
But when you apply for, say, the 1718 year, you're going to have a, a plan like this as part of the application, right? Because you're applying for specific amounts for specific programming.
We know, we will have a plan as to what we have spent the money on. That's what we need to include with the application and verification that it has been used for indigent individuals. We don't need to submit a plan such as this. We just came up with this plan as a guide for this money now. The other counties that have received the funding, they're not taking this route and going as far as we are as far as planning.
Right. I just want to make sure we don't apply for money that we don't have programming to roll into.
Well, and that might get us more money because we were doing such a good planning job. So we will come up with another plan to bring forward. And it wouldn't be a supplantation. We write off, what, $800,000 or something a year in indigent ambulance service. So I'd like us to consider adding in ambulance service for the indigent in this component to take any gap in that funding. I don't, I don't think we should leave that off. And then if, and then I would certainly assume under the most, right now we have a couple of bicycles and I appreciate Officer Gibson sent me some information that that program's going to be, one day a week, they're going to use a bicycle to actually go to the homeless camps and see what services can be provided that they have found, it was in Houston, that they found that program to be very successful. So maybe in next year's round of applications, I'd like to see what the success of that most in the activity there and if there's more resources that we could put to the most team, because I think we're getting again, another huge success in the community. So potentially expanding most activity.
And I know you haven't gotten to it yet, but one of the areas I'd like to make sure we're addressing adequately as you work with the Senior Center is our Meals on Wheels program because I, I think we often forget our seniors and there are a lot of homebound seniors that depend on Meals on Wheels for their only nourishment. And I'd like to make sure we're adequately serving that population, whether it be another vehicle that might help Courtney or, or funding for food. So I'd like to consider that too.
I was going to say, I'd like to, can we specifically, thank you Ted. I think we, we're going to give you some, some drug test, more drug testing. I think he lives on drug testing. That's what he thinks too. So I would like to talk specifically, if we can, about Meals on Wheels. Can you go through that program?
Okay. Yeah. Let me, let me go back to most for just a minute because again, it's going to be the performance measures, you know, we really want to make sure that we have those so that we could say, yeah, if we expand this program or, you know, most is, is out on a limited amount of time. So to be able to get that out another day or anything like that would be great.
Sorry, I'm just trying to hurry you along because Assemblyman Kramer has arrived and I'm pretty going to guess he's got to go back to...
Okay.
So I want to get straight to the heart of the questions. Thank you.
So Meals on Wheels.
Thank you.
Courtney Warner from the Carson City Senior Center. I'm happy to answer any questions or I can talk a little bit about an overview, but for the sake of time, go either which way you'd like.
I'm fine with going to questions unless somebody, okay. Okay. Supervisor Bonkowski?
My question on this is that on the Meals on Wheels program, that the people being served have the ability to self-declare that they meet the guidelines. And I just want to have some assurance that we're not going to get ourselves into trouble if they're self-reporting that they're eligible and they're not actually eligible.
So right now our policy is that we have a client registration form that they complete at intake and then assessed annually. As part of the process, it is just self-declaration of their income levels because our program is not contingent on their income. But we can change the process if we needed to for data collection, if that's needed for reporting because this, this is one of the programs that's done by our case managers in their homes. So we have a lot more contact with the clients. So we can get more information if it's determined that that's needed for the eligibility.
And just to add to that, we will need to determine that. And what I'm hoping is that we identify, you know, 10 or 20 actual individuals and that's who we're funding, are those individuals, not just, you know, the program as a whole.
And then on this program, I'm assuming some more work is going to have to be done, that this is a broad stroke that's in this plan as to what we're actually going to reimburse versus what we're not going to reimburse. So, you know, it, it's a, it's a variance whether we cover the, the federal program gives you $3.15 per meal. So are we going to reimburse the indigent ones at the same rate? So I just think a little more work needs to be done. I'm okay with including Meals and Wheels as a component of this, but potentially Courtney, we could agendize later or something for you to actually come back and give us program overviews and let us know how it's completely funded and what sources are used from the Senior Center and, and really help develop operating procedures for this. So I'm okay with Meals and Wheels being part of the plan that potentially we assist, but I'd like to see a little more discussion at a later date on the mechanics.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Thank you. And we plan on developing policies and procedures for all of this. And my hope is to bring back what is happening with this program through the Board of Health so that you all can watch and be...
A success.
Updated on what's going on.
Do we have any other questions on any of the specifics in the plan? No one? Do we have any public comment on items suggested in the plan? Okay, then I'll bring it back up to the board for discussion and motion.
Well, I think as we talked about, we could fund three years of the personnel with 5% increases in year two and three. We can fund the housing and drug testing with 3% increases in year two and three. We do not have enough funds to fund the one-time needs for three years. We could do the administrators, do the most, but we wouldn't be able to do three years of Meals on Wheels. Yeah. If we just did one, then we'd be fine. We'd actually have about, I think, $20,000 gap left between what we think we're going to get and what we're up to.
Are you okay, is the board okay with adding ambulance for any of the gap? Because that, that potentially, should we add ambulance to fill any of the gap plan in case there's 20,000?
We already go for the Medicaid reimbursement and then we write off the balance. So if we have this to write off the balance, then that covers the entire gap. We fully allocate everything that we have up to the amount that we can.
Can I make that contingent on getting an opinion from Dagny Stapleton with NACO? That, that would be an okay expense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I thought you said we didn't put it, never mind. That's fine.
Well, ma'am, that's my question. Does NACO have to approve the funds?
Well, they don't have to approve it, but, but Dagny, who's the executive director, is working closely with that board in identifying approvals. I mean, you know, is this what you're looking for? You know, they're, they've approved the money to go back to the county. And we just want to make sure that we're not spending it on something that they're going to frown upon for our next application process. So I think it'll be fine. I think it'll be fine, but I'd like to run it faster.
And we did run this plan.
And we did run this plan past her initially. Does that, does that seem, anybody on the board have any difference or additions? Okay. Brad, did you want to make a motion?
I will try a motion here. Uh, I move to approve allocating the anticipated credit reimbursement from the Medicaid match program upon receipt as follows. The four items listed under primary needs personnel in the strategic plan would be funded for three years with five percent increases in years two and three. The Human Services General Assistance Supplemental Program would be funded for three years at the stated amount of six thousand dollars per year. The next two items under secondary need transitional housing would be funded for three years. So there's two items, they'd be funded for three years with three percent increases in years two and three. And under one-time needs, the NACO administrators, the first item, the item under first-time needs, number one, would be funded for three years. The item number two, under one-time needs, would be funded for three years at the stated amount. And item three, Meals on Wheels, would be funded for one year at thirty thousand dollars in addition to any remaining balance of the accredited amount to be, um, used for the bad debt write-off amount for indigent ambulance service, subject to, um, final approval from NACO on that last item being allowed.
Okay, on discussion.
So it is a long motion. You, you did well. Would, would the motioner be willing to prioritize Meals on Wheels over the ambulance funds in year two and three?
Uh, the, the intent of the motion, yeah, and I think what I said was that that's the balance after funding everything in the here.
Okay, so you're, you're funding Meals on Wheels for one year at thirty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
But no, up to, no funding for year two and three. But if, so I'm asking if there were funds available, could it go there first as opposed to ambulance first?
We're on discussion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have it come back to see what.
Okay.
That could be our second year application, Stacy, when they go back to go for a year or two, if we've seen success after Courtney comes back with a plan.
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
Which, which contradicts what I just agreed to for most, but.
Right. That's why I'm asking.
Um, well, it's going to come back to us in a year, so we can address it then. I mean, we, we, we wouldn't be able to fund even one additional year.
We can't do it.
No, but you could fund, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. I mean, if you, if, if you're going to take ten thousand dollars off of indigent ambulance versus ten thousand going to our seniors, I'd prefer go to the seniors. That's all I'm saying.
You're saying not to put the ambulance in at all, then?
Well, you could put it in, I'm just saying.
You'd give it to Meals on Wheels.
Well, we don't know how this money is going to play out. We don't know, they, they may not be able to spend all the money. You, you, I mean, you know.
Well, uh, it's up to thirty thousand and I'm going to say upon just review, I don't think they're going to spend the thirty thousand in year one. So how about, since it's up to thirty thousand, if it takes three years, if it's ten thousand, how about that? That, that, that's inclusive, that it's up to the thirty thousand for Meals on Wheels, whether it takes one year or three years, that we're allocating up to thirty thousand for Meals on Wheel.
I'm agreeable to that amendment.
Are you agreeable to that?
And can I just add, under the one time, we really intended just one time. We're not going to, um, buy goggles every year for, for the CIT training, nor, um, you know, the bicycles are the most team expenses. That, that, we were just looking for one time, what is a one-time need? Again, because we don't know what our future funding's going to be.
So we'll, we'll go to the whole thirty thousand and the second was agreeable on Meals on Wheels? Pretty clear? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your, uh, hard work and for going after the application.
Thank you, and I just want to, again, thank all, all the partners that showed up today and were able to answer questions.
Mayor Jean, um, I just, I, thank you for making this evidence-based, too. I, I think that speaks a lot to your professionalism and to our ability to sustain these programs in the eyes of people who may fund in the future. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Very nice. And tying it into the.
A little plug-in, that's, that's a piece of being an accredited health department. And everything ties to our plans. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take up item eleven B, which is the, um, legislation that Assemblyman Kramer has introduced and is requesting that we, um, support. Assemblyman Kramer, thank you so much for coming today and.
Well, thanks for inviting me and I am certainly aware of how sometimes your items run over and, um, people have to wait a little while, but not a problem. I, I.
Yeah, actually, we're hours ahead and so we.
Very good. Well, it worked out. I, I got here as soon as I could and, um, I allowed enough time. I, I have actually nine bill drafts, uh, that are going before the legislature and several of these have something to do with Carson City and I've, I've got some people in, in the room here who are supporting some of these. But let me just go through some of them. The first one I have is, is in a, is one that, uh, it's BDR forty-eight dash forty-five and it has to do with certain assessments of water. And whenever somebody hears one that we've got a bill draft on water, I get phone calls from everybody wanting to know what this is all about. But this is one I worked with, um, uh, your, your treasurer, Gail Robertson, and we, uh, we, we noticed that when I was treasurer and, and she saw the same thing, that there are some tax bills that go out where the entire tax bill is less than a dollar. And it comes about when the, the ground basin water districts give their bill to the county and it's split up by parcel number in that district and it goes to people and it's added on their tax bill. But if you happen to be a disabled veteran and you don't pay any ad valorem taxes, this bill still comes to you. So what this bill would do is it would allow the county to pay these, and, and for Carson, I think we have twenty of them. Last time I counted, one year there were twenty. It'd be allow us to pay these bills from general fund and not send out a tax bill, then it costs us more to send a bill out than the revenue would be. So it's, it's kind of a good government one. I think it'll pass easily. Um, secondly, this, this, this guy, Bob Kroll, I don't see him around here, you know, you know who he is, all right? Bob, Mayor Kroll asked me to sponsor a bill revising the, uh, the Airport Authority Act for Carson City on how they choose their board of directors. And that then was, uh, was drafted, um, you know, by the Airport Authority Attorney and, and that'll be presented. I don't have a bill number on that yet. Uh, another one, uh, we're, Nevada is the only state that does not have a committee that decides how private activity bonds are, are allocated throughout the state. So I have a bill that will be doing that and hopefully make it so that when, when a commitment is made, that commitment is kept and you can kind of forecast how things are going and, uh, how that, those decisions are made. And secondly, on private activity bonds, we're going to try and, uh, copy some language out of Vermont to, um, allow, uh, private activity bonds to seed a revolving loan fund for scholarships, not for UNR, UNLV, where they run them thirty to a hundred thousand dollars in student loans, but where someone wants to improve their skills at WNC and runs up, you know, three thousand dollars in loans and, and have a revolving fund to help pay those off, advance that and, and pay it off. So we're looking at private activity bonds for two bill drafts to do that. Um, I've got a bill in that would change slightly how contractors work with subcontractors. Right now, if you're a contractor and you get into a wall and, and it's electrical or plumbing that you're working with, you got to bring in a subcontractor for that and, and frankly, it's, it's been a little hectic and sometimes you can't get a sub to come in right away. And, and when they do, they want to get paid for their time, so the bill is higher than it normally would be. So we're looking to see if we can't have a de minimis amount that if you're looking at five hundred dollars worth of work or two thousand dollars worth of work, I, I don't need, necessarily need to pick the number. Uh, it will be picked, but I, I'm, I'm not focused on a particular number, that the contractor can get the work done and not have to bring in a sub, uh, necessarily. And by the way, the, the, the subs are in favor of this, too, because, uh, they find themselves doing something in a wall and, and, and a plumbing contractor can find out he's got to move a wire or an electrical contractor finds out there's plumbing in the way, they, they run into the same thing. So I think we're going to, as long as it's a, a de minimis amount that can be accepted, I think this will find a lot of approval. Um, the school board, um, has asked me to bring forth a bill that would, uh, do like Washoe County did and allow for Carson City to put on a ballot, a, 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 a bill that, or a, a petition that would allow, uh, the, uh, school board to set up a committee to decide whether they need, uh, school facilities. And, uh, but it'd be on the ballot. And if they, if they did that, they could recommend, I'm sorry. This bill would allow the school board to set up a committee to decide whether money is needed, uh, from any different source of, of possible taxes for school facilities, similar to what Washoe County did. And, uh, and so I will be bringing that forward. It will take a vote of the people for them to do anything, but it'll be, it's trying to move along. Uh, we're, we're building apartment buildings and we have the same school facilities and we're getting more and more kids in the system. Something's got to give someplace, so this is a place to start. Uh, those are the bills that haven't been given numbers yet. I have three that have numbers. One is AB two fourteen and this one, um, is to provide a feasibility study for making a museum out of the old Nevada State Prison. And I know Maurice is here. We, we've had some pretty good discussions on this. Um, and, and it, and it does not, it, it's actually in the governor's budget to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for some immediate, more or less repairs that make the facility so that, uh, non-state employees can go in. You could have a, a tour of some sort. So I'm thinking both of them are kind of tied to each other and it, and it looks like right now we may get both of them passed. So we're working on that. That's kind of a high one.
Assemblyman Kramer, would you prefer to finish or ask questions as we go? Mr. Jean?
Questions are fine, Stacy.
So, um, Al, on the, on the, on the bill in section three, it, it says, "An evaluation of the Nevada State Prison structures and artifact, uh, resources," I can't see without these stupid things, "available for the museum." So it says, "Marketing analysis, client, audience analysis, and interpretive plan." So I, my, my question was, and I know one of the issues has been in the past, um, and I've spoken to Ronnie about this, is the, is the feasibility of the construction and the code compliance. Do you feel like it's necessary to have that language in here or do you feel like it's, that's addressed? I mean, it would be nice if this feasibility could look, or, or the study could, could look at that, uh, the feasibility of construction and code compliance or maybe altering it for code compliance? Um, or is that not your intent? Or do you think it's too much?
I mean, it's. It, it is a huge step because there's no way in the world you're ever going to get that building code compliant. This is, this is a museum, this is looking at things the way they were built a long time.
I, I get that part. I mean, and I'm, and I'm not looking for the money to make it code compliant. I guess what I'm saying is looking for ways to maybe work around those codes so that, um, you know, it, it, it can be fully operational as a museum, be fully operational and have the blessing that it needs to have. Um, and, and maybe there's not a way to put that language in there or maybe that's, wasn't the intent of what you were trying to do. But in the code, there are provisions for, you know, alternative means and measures and, um, and maybe, maybe there's a way to have an expert apply those alternative means and measures that allows you to get where you want to get. I, I just throw that out. Maybe that's something for down the road.
Supervisor Giomi, uh, we, we looked at this from the, from the start and, and the first approach was to do similar to what you're talking about. And it came about that the governor was willing to put a quarter million dollars in his budget to address, I think there's nineteen items on the list. And those nineteen items were designed to make the building, uh, friendly enough to allow people to go through, uh, without changing the demeanor of the building.
Okay.
And I, I think that's where we want to be as the first step.
Fair enough.
And go from there. And then we do the feasibility study and if it shows up, and I'm, quite frankly, I'm, I'm very hopeful and, uh, very confident, actually, that it will show that this is feasible, given the fact that there's been, already been a movie made out there that, that contributed somewhat to the, some of the changes we've made over the years, to improvements. Uh, and it's one of very few in the country like it. So I think it's got a good shot and, and so it's really a two-step this time around and we're seeing where we're at and it's.
So this might be a third or a fourth step.
That, if indeed we have to make those kind of changes, and it may be down the road that someone says, "We don't care if you're a museum or not, you're going to have to do this and this and this." Uh, then I think we approach it. But the, but the, the question was asked in committee when this came up for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make it available for people to, for tours and that to go through, was how much more money is there in this? And, and the question wasn't really answered, but if I'd have been there to answer the question, I'd have said, "We're not planning on putting any more capital money into the building to make it, uh, as, as ongoing for state things." Down the road, if it's a museum that actually starts paying for itself, I think we're going to want a, a reception area, you're going to want a, uh, you know, a place where people meet before they go in and where they meet after they come out while there's maybe tours going along or something like that. But I think the idea would be that'd be paid for from funds generated by the museums, either refreshments or a fee at the door or something like that.
Thank you.
I mean, the, the whole idea, I think, is to say, if you come to Carson City as a tourist, where are you going to go? Virginia City, Lake Tahoe? What's Carson go? We've got the museum, couple of museums, and this is another museum that somebody can spend a half a day at and walk away saying, "That was really neat."
Well, I, I think you, I think you would even get people who would do events here. I mean, I think you would, if, if, if it's working, I think you would even get people who would, who would do a wedding event here, for instance, because, seriously, I mean, how many people can say, I, I mean, I, I really believe that it would be, I, I, I think the possibilities are endless. So I appreciate you and Maurice doing that. Thank you.
Uh, the next one is, is, um, is AB two fourteen. Last session passed a bill, passed a law that required document preparation peoples to have a bond and register with Secretary of State. And this caught in its web, some people who prepare taxes who are, they're not enrolled agents or unenrolled agents, but they, they're, they have the continuing education and they have the ability to represent, to, you know, to stand with people in a, in a tax court and, 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 uh, answer questions before the IRS. And those people, we, we're trying to exclude from the bond requirement. So it may pass, it may not pass, there's some pushback, but, um, I think this has the attitude, if you take someone who does this for half dozen client, does their taxes for half dozen clients a year, you're basically going to, we either be full-time or we don't want you in business. And, and these are people, some of them who've been in, doing this for thirty years and they're not the ones they're trying to go after. The, the tax repairs, they say, "Hey, I can get you five hundred dollars back on your taxes if, you know, you pay me a hundred dollars." And then when, when it's audited, they owe money. And so there are some crooked people out there and that bond was designed to go after them and I think this is a different class of people. Then the last one I want to talk about is probably the most important, is AB one ninety-one, which, uh, which will extend the, the mobile outreach safety teams, the most teams, uh, from just Clark and Washoe County and, and Carson has had the benefit of having one of Washoe County's teams one day a week, uh, to the rural counties. And, uh, this is, um, a bill, we're asking for a million dollars a year for financing on this, this bill. And I'm fortunate enough to say that, uh, this is also in the governor's budget. Exactly what funding is in the governor's budget, I, I've got to dig into and see exactly, but having it in there is, is a pretty good start. So, uh, I, I know there's, uh, some support here and, 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 uh, on this bill as well. But it's, uh, this one may be one that we want to bring some people from Carson City to and it's heard on, on the Assembly Four and, and going forward. So I'm available for questions, if you've got any.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Kramer? No?
I guess I would only have one comment, which is on, uh, BDR S fifty, the one that you don't have the language for. I would prefer that we don't vote on that until we actually have language to read.
You're talking about the Airport Authority one?
Yeah.
Uh, Supervisor Monkowski, Steve Takis wrote that language. So it, it, the Airport Authority wrote the, the language and I adopted his suggestion on how it should be written and I expected it not to be changed much if any by LCB Legal, if that helps.
And we saw the language here when we recommended and re, you can come up, Mr. Owen. Yeah, we, we saw the language that was in the proposal that was sent to Assemblyman Kramer, like you said.
Good morning. Thank you for the record, Ken Moen, Airport Manager, Carson City Airport. Um, that is correct. We did bring it to the board. The board discussed it. I also came to a, a Board of Supervisors meeting where it was also discussed, I believe, voted on at that time. Having not seen the final bill, there were only two or three minor changes to it, included one of them, uh, was about the successive terms. Uh, we're, we're writing. Right now, you can serve one term, and then you have to sit out a term before you can serve a second. And the purpose of that was to provide some sort of historical record from project to project. Often, these grant projects extend beyond the term of a board member or two, and there you lose some institutional knowledge on that. So that was the purpose behind that. And then there was another one on there about the Section 24 concerned hiring, promoting, and discharge of employees. And I think there were some languages that became complicated at a past time, so they used that opportunity to clean that language up. And then there was a note on here about Section 29, which is the appointment of the terms of the initial board members, but I obviously don't think that's germane. So those are the minor changes that came up at that time.
I think we can consider supporting it as intended, and then if it gets amended, we could ask staff to bring it back if somehow, I've had bills before that had a consequence, but it opened up a chapter and a whole bunch more information came in. So maybe we want to support and then indicate if there's any major amendments that staff would bring it back to us if we had a surprise, since it is our language that we already approved and sent to Assemblyman Kramer.
Yeah, I'd be okay with supporting the intent until we can actually read the final copy.
Any public comment that would like to come up? Mr. White?
Good morning, Mayor Protim and Board. Maurice White with the Nevada State Preservation Society. I would like to thank Assemblyman Kramer for bringing AB 214 to your attention and ask for your support in AB 214. What this bill will do for us is accelerate our timeline to be able to bring this facility online as a historical, educational, and economic benefit to Carson City. I'd also like to bring to your attention the movie that Assemblyman Kramer spoke to. They have announced that that movie will be in theaters March 15. I have not yet been able to ascertain which theaters, but I will be sure to let you know as soon as I know. Again, thank you for your support, if you so choose. Title of the movie is "The Mustang."
"The Mustang?"
It's a movie about the Mustang gentling project that the prisoners go through. That was quite an event out there at the prison, six weeks or so of filming horses inside the culinary, guards on the roof. It was an event. It was entertaining in itself.
Good morning. For the record, David Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, also here in support of AB 214. Also, you saw Ronnie this morning, she had to leave for a meeting. So I'm speaking on behalf of Ronnie at her request. The chamber is in support of AB 214 as well. So thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any of these? Okay, then I'll bring it back up here to the Board for a motion. Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to support AB 191, and AB 214, and BDR 4845. And in addition, I move to support the intent of BDR S-50 until such time as we can read the final language.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Assemblyman Kramer, thank you so very much for your time and for bringing this legislation forward.
You'll hear more from me.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much. Okay, let me get back. I think we've caught up with everything. We're on to, did I have, yeah, I was going to say, I think we're just on to item 18, right? Okay. So let's start with legislative matters review.
All right. So this is just to report on some of the bills that we're monitoring closely, and any bills that you've asked me to report on. And if you wish, on any of these, I can, these can be placed on future agendas for a vote from the Board of Support, Opposition, or to remain neutral. The first one I wanted to update you on is SB 48, which is the NACO diesel fuel tax bill that the Board voted last meeting to support. That bill had its first hearing before the Senate Revenue and Economic Development Committee last Thursday, and there was overwhelming support for the bill. And we'll continue to bring updates on that as that progresses. The next thing is there are several bills that are affecting prevailing wage for public works projects, AB 136, AB 190, and SB 231. So all three of these bills will lower the minimum threshold to apply prevailing wage from $250,000 to $100,000 on our public works projects. And they estimated that that would cost the city about $200,000 annually. AB 136 is being sponsored by almost 30 members of the Assembly. The changes proposed affect school districts and also the Nevada system of higher education, as well as there's a piece in there that lowers the threshold, and that's the part that affects the city. AB 190 essentially does the same thing as AB 136, and that's sponsored by some of the same legislators. And then SB 231 is sponsored by a handful of senators, and that's the Senate version of AB 136, and basically does the same thing to lower the minimum threshold. And so all three of these bills have some other tweaks that we'll be monitoring, but the big, the main substance is that lowering the threshold from $250,000 to $100,000.
Just reverses what we gained last time, puts it back?
Right. So on to workers' comp bills. There's about five bills that we're monitoring. These contain sweeping changes to the current workers' comp law in Nevada that we've seen in almost 30 years. Collectively, what these bills attempt to do is shift the burden of proof from the employee to the employer to prove that an injury or illness did not arise out of and in the course and scope of employment. So the employer has to, has the burden of, you know, saying that it didn't arise during the course of work. Some of the other things they do, AB 128, it increases the term of the vocational rehab program up to 24 months. I testified on this last session, and what it does is ends up doubling what we would have to pay for the voc rehab program. And currently, it costs at least $65,000 for an employee to be on a 12-month program, and then it would double that, because we're self-insured, the city would end up paying, you know, $130,000 or so.
Isn't it 18 months now, the voc rehab that we pay? Isn't it 18 months?
I think, there's different thresholds, you know, of how many months, but I think the last two we've had have been 12.
It's up to, they have to qualify for extensions.
Yeah, but it pays up to 18 months. It's not, again, it depends on what they're accepted into.
Yeah, it depends on their level of impairment, yeah. So, but I think the two that I remember that we had on there were about a year.
Yes, that's true. There was two back in 15, I think one went the full 15 months, and the other one was a year. And the two recent ones were, I think, under a year. They weren't even a full year. But these are scary bills, because there is also a daily fee in one of the bills that we'd have to pay if we don't, you know, resolve a workers' comp claim in a certain amount of time. And it's not always the city's fault that those workers' comp claims aren't, I mean, it's usually the other attorney that's lagging. So these are some scary bills.
Okay. They also introduce causes of action for bad faith and unfair trade practice that employees can file against employers. Currently, the employee's only recourse is a workers' comp claim. They also mandate penalties, which Sherry was just talking about, against employers when a claim has been denied and then the claimant ultimately prevails. There's also changes related to predisposing conditions, which affect things like the heart-lung claims. So in other words, if employees fail to correct predisposing conditions, they may still be covered, whereas the law currently, it excludes those conditions from coverage if the employee fails to correct them. The employer would have to prove that not correcting the predisposing condition caused the disease. Does that make sense? And then SB 215, this bill provides that disabling cancer is an occupational disease and compensable under the provisions governing occupational diseases. If the cancer develops or manifests itself out of and in the course of employment of a person that's been employed for two years or more, that's reduced down from five years, if they've been employed as a police officer, arson investigator, full-time firefighter, or volunteer firefighter. It also eliminates the list of substances which are deemed to be known carcinogens. And it provides that disabling cancer is conclusively presumed to be occupationally related. So it opens us up to every cancer. So basically, every cancer would be presumed to be work-related. They're working on amendments to these bills to make them more reasonable. So we'll monitor and see how that progresses. On to AB 133, which is for homeless youth indigent funds. This creates an unfunded mandate by requiring every county to provide care, support, and relief to runaway or homeless youth under age 24, currently it's under age 18, who lack other means of support. And the city has been working with the stakeholders to amend the language to make it enabling rather than mandatory for us to provide the service.
Is there any effort to lower that age back between the two, 18 to 24?
I think they're maintaining the age at 24 in the proposed amendments. But it just says that the Board of County Commissioners may establish and approve policies for the funding, the homeless and the runaways. AB 84, state park bonds. This bill stems from the 2002 ballot question one, where the voters approved a proposal to issue general obligation bonds to the state. This bill would require the state to issue an additional $2 million in state obligation bonds to continue some of the projects that were specified in that ballot question. Parks Department, Jim Budge, has been working with various stakeholders and also our lobbyist, Steve Walker, on negotiating an amendment that would provide more equity throughout the state so that northern Nevada would receive more of those funds.
Briefly, Carson Water Subconservancy also is proposing some amendments to that.
Okay.
Generally in support of it, but I think the last update I got was that they were, they may have been, did you get that update, the last update? That they were going to try and get Carson Water Subconservancy District, including as one of the agencies it could fund, but I understand that that was sort of, that may be pulled away.
Yeah, I think.
But there are some amendments from that as well.
Reno, Sparks, Washoe, the Nevada Land Trust, and Douglas and Lyon and Elko are all on a committee that's working on the amendments. AB 81, the indigent defense. This, we really needed the mayor to be here to comment on, but NACO and the mayor are working on amendments to the bill that would make it more in line with what the interim committee had agreed on. It is up on Tuesday, and the mayor is working to ensure that it doesn't become an unfunded mandate. And I can report back later on what goes on with that bill. There's a number of water bills, there's probably about eight. We're just watching, nothing affects Carson City at this point, but we'll continue to monitor those and report back.
They actually do. There's at least four bills from the Water Engineers' Office that would affect Carson City, but it's anticipated that all four will die. None of the four bills received any support outside the Water Engineers' Office.
That's right. That's right. He let us know that at the last luncheon. Collective bargaining bills, I think, I have a couple more. So there are several collective bargaining bills that we're monitoring. AB 103 deals with concessions and leave provided to employees for time spent in providing services for an employee organization. SB 111 is the ending fund balance. This would revise the percentage of ending fund balance that can be excluded from collective bargaining negotiations. We got it up to 25%. They're suggesting lowering it down to 6.67.
16.67.
16.67.
Boy, everybody opposed.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't see the one. So I guess we're lucky that they're just lowering it to 16.67 versus, you know, going any lower. So SB 153 just revises some timelines dealing with local government employee management relations board. Last thing I wanted to talk about was SB 245, which is tort actions. The existing law provides that the limitation on the amount of damages that may be awarded in a tort action against a governmental entity, its officers or employees, is currently $100,000. This bill would increase the limit to $250,000. And if the act or omission amounts to gross negligence, it's $1 million. Let's see. And then it would become effective for a cause of action that accrues on or after July 1st, And that's all I had for the legislative update.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Kenny, this is for you. AB 143, which was the background check law that got passed already. There's been a movement out there to create sanctuary counties where the Board of County Commissioners or Board of Supervisors, whatever the entity is, would pass a resolution dictating that that law not be enforced. And Lyon County and Douglas County are actually bringing this in front of their county commissions. I was just wondering if you've gotten any feedback from the public or anybody else regarding this? I'm just surprised that Douglas and Lyon are actually going to bring this in front of their county commissions and discuss it, because I haven't gotten any calls on it.
For the record, Sheriff Furlong, there's been inquiries, none substantial, if you will. So I've allowed my opinion to go out, but as you said, the governor's already signed it into law. Representing the sheriff's office, that law has little to no impact on us. And so I'm not suggesting that, or recommending that we jump up and join on some bandwagon or term that really isn't a term.
Nancy, you just, you didn't talk about AB 70, but I assume you're monitoring AB 70, which is the open meeting law. I mean, I think, I mean, I think the, last I heard, the provisions are relative to that, or, you know, the real onerous ones were going to be removed, but I just want to make sure you guys are watching it.
Both the open meeting law and the ethics law are being monitored, and Dan and Jason are pretty much taking the lead on that.
Thank you.
So these are, do we want any of these bills? This is where we tell you that we want you to bring forward next time to be agendized. So is there any of these that you would like us to be able to take any formal positions on?
I'm really concerned about this indigent 24. I don't understand the rationale behind that.
Mm-hmm. I agree. I also would like to see AB 70, just to see where all the amendments and where everything is sitting so that we can have formal action on that one, unless it's dead before. But I'd like to see AB 70. Yeah, I'd like to see that one.
The biggest part is the telephonic. Sorry. The biggest part, which I think may have been amended out, is the telephonic part, where the public can attend a meeting via telephone. I just, I think it creates real logistical problems. Anyway. You know, I don't suppose there's any point in bringing the AB 136, the prevailing You know, I don't suppose there's any point in bringing the AB 136, the prevailing wage forward with that many sponsors of the bill. I mean, I don't know that there's even any point in bringing that forward, but, I mean, obviously, that's gonna cost our citizens more money.
Oh, my gosh. I think both on the prevailing wage and the workers' comp bills are pretty much determined to be a pass-through.
On the prevailing wage ones, did we testify, did all the local governments testify against? What was on the record? I mean, I'm having a, or did we all just acquiesce and say that it's going?
I don't, they haven't had any hearings. I don't think they've had any hearings on it, but we've just heard from our lobbyists that that's pretty much the, you know, what's being talked about by all the different...
Have the school districts?
I don't know about the school districts, just from NACO, just the local governments, we've heard that they're going neutral.
Well, maybe since there hasn't been testimony yet, if we brought it forward, having a strong up or down for us would be better than just having general testimony that we would have our impact.
And also, a fiscal, an unsolicited fiscal note, too.
Right. So maybe we do want to bring the prevailing wage, even so that we can put it on the record, because it becomes an unfunded, here, look at all the good things we've done over the last two years because of the previous law change that increased the rate. So I'd like to see the prevailing wage, and it can be a group discussion on that one.
We did input fiscal notes for that. Darren and I worked together, Darren Schultz and I worked together to do a fiscal note saying that it would cost the city $200,000 at a minimum for the prevailing wage rate to change, so.
Is there any others we wanted, Dan?
Yeah, I just, I want to provide some information to the board. I just pulled up the legislative website, and I can tell you that AB 136 has not been heard, but it is scheduled to be heard before the Assembly Government Affairs Committee tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m.
And it does have four fiscal notes on it, including the local governments.
We always have a chance, anyway, to make sure that our testimony is stronger when it goes to the other house. So just because one house gets through, sometimes you really, the efforts, the bigger pushes time-wise to the other one, so I'd like to see those. Is there any other legislation you'd like for the manager's office, excuse me, to bring forward as an action item?
Can I, you guys asked about the school district and the effect on, I think, on the prevailing wage. Their fiscal impact for one year was 4.2 million that they estimated.
Wow.
And then just Clark County School District alone was 15 million for the biennium?
That's because they have the additional exemption, right? What, 10% exemption or...
It's 90% of the prevailing wage.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Okay. So now we'll move on to, we did a couple on the future agenda on some of the legislation. Is there any other future agenda items, anyone on the board? No? Okay. Anybody have any review of projects to bring up? Oh, we're doing good. Any internal communications or administrative matters? No? How about Correspondents' Board? No one. How about anything from any member of the board? They want to bring up. I'll just say that Supervisor Bonkowski and I met yesterday with the rifle range group. I think we had a great meeting. We went through and prioritized all of the, took the two reports and really prioritized what we need to do to get the facility open, and really did a action plan to come forward, so we're moving along in that committee.
Is that second report done?
Yes, it is.
And finalized?
Yes, it is.
So could that get distributed to the board?
Yeah, it's on the website.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we had the meeting yesterday for the rifle range, and it's a...
It was presented.
It was presented, and there's, so you can pull that up, absolutely. Any other, putty to status, anything? Okay. Any just general staff comments or status? Going, going, gone, she's talking, so I'm gonna assume no. Okay. I'll move on to final public comment. Mr. White?
Thank you for hearing from me again. Maurice White with the Nevada State Preservation Society. I neglected to extend an offer to the Board of Supervisors and staff to come out to the Nevada State Prison at your convenience to have a look at what we're doing out there. We think that would help you make your decision about supporting AB 214.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay. Then if there's no objection, we're adjourned. Thank you for a good meeting. We'll just come back five minutes. Thank you.